All right, I have seven o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we will have our implication and our pledge will stand for that. And I've asked, I've asked our council member, Ms. Howard, if she will pray for us tonight.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so very much for giving us this time that we can meet together to do the town business. Father, I pray that you'll just give us the wisdom and the knowledge that we need to handle each situation, Father, according to your perfect will. Father, I thank you for each one that's here tonight, and thank you for their interest in the town business. And Lord, I thank you for giving our police officers and our staff, town citizens, Father, of safety, protection, Father. And Lord, I pray that you'll just continue to lead God and direct us as we do your will each day, Father, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you have any comments about any matters that do not appear on the agenda, we invite you to come forward at this time. You have three minutes, and we ask you to state your name and address and fill out a form for our clerk. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a couple seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Filled in.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a public hearing item tonight, and Philip is gonna make a presentation to us. We'll probably have some other input. And Philip, if you could go ahead and get this kicked off, please.
The first item before you this evening is a consideration here, a revision of development plan as part of the light industrial M1 planned industrial park overlay of parcel 06726-068 from applicant East Group Properties LP on behalf of the owner, Hobgood Family LP. The property in question is roughly 60 acres. It's, to the north is a zoned CMU, which is community mixed use. To the south is C1, which is downtown commercial. To the east is educational, institutional, and agricultural residential. To the west is M2, which is heavy industrial at the industrial park quarry. A summary of this application. Summary of the application. Applicant East Group Properties has submitted the petition on behalf of the owner, Hobgood, the Hobgood Family LP. This property was previously zoned for, conditionally for movie studios, movie media productions. It was also associated with a development of regional impact in 2017, DRI 2830, which reviewed both the studio development plan and the mixed-use development plan for the 43-acre tract to the north. This petition is, in terms of comprehensive plan compatibility, generally consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and future development strategy. The property lies within the community gateway character area, which promotes the development of future medical, entertainment, and other emerging high-tech industries, as well as business headquarters through high-quality architectural and landscaping standards that protect the scenic nature of Highway 74. The proposed development plan focuses on incorporating such landscaping, birmingham, and screening elements listed in the comp plan. Current architectural renderings, I do want to note, and we can get to some of those in the packet, do not necessarily reflect the town's material requirement, but do highlight a high architectural standard. If material requirements are adhered to, staff does consider such renderings to meet the standard of the comp plan. The lower traffic count of this development compared with the previous approval of movie media productions reflects a lower intensity transportation impact with fewer access points on Highway 74. A golf cart path constructed to the town standard has also been reflected in the development plan, furthering the goals of the town's multi-use connectivity goals in the comp plan. In terms of zoning ordinance compatibility and impact assessment, I'll just go through the questions that are listed in our ordinance. Will the zoning permit suitable uses with surrounding properties? Staff, it's staff's determination that the proposed development plan suggested, suggests appropriate uses for Highway 74 and the community gateway character area and surrounding properties, if appropriately screened, buffered, and constructed to the architectural guidelines listed in the ordinance. Will the zoning adversely affect adjacent properties? The proposed development plan has the potential to adversely affect adjacent properties from a traffic perspective, although a traffic study reflecting a lower impact from the previously approved zoning has been submitted. Comment from the Fayette County Board of Education has also been acquired with no objection to the proposed development. Appropriate traffic and transportation improvements have been outlined by the development of regional impact, and staff does want to incorporate those conditions into the approval as well, and I'll outline those in just a minute. Does the property have reasonable economic use as currently zoned? It is staff's determination that the property does currently have reasonable economic use under its current development plan. Would the proposed zoning result in a use which will or could be excessively burdensome on existing infrastructure? Given the traffic capacity of Highway 74 and Jenkins Road, it is staff's opinion that if no traffic improvements are constructed, the development could pose an excessive burden on road infrastructure. If the proposed traffic improvements listed in the DRI are implemented, this would address this issue. The proposed development suggests an average of 9,250 gallons per day of sewer usage and water usage, which is not burdensome on the town's existing capacity and Fayette County's water capacity. Stormwater facilities built to appropriate standards and regulated by a recorded maintenance agreement will be required to ensure feasible impact on the town's pre-existing stormwater infrastructure. In terms of staff and planning commission's recommendation, I'll kind of outline briefly some of the conditions from the DRI, because staff does recommend that the conditions of the DRI be implemented into the zoning of this property. They start on page 22 of your packet, and you can kind of see, this is Greta's, Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. This is their, their recommended traffic improvements, that pedestrian connectivity between all buildings and uses be incorporated. That is shown on their site plan, but they wanted to ensure that. In terms of roadway and site access improvements, at Highway 74 and Site Driveway A, which I can highlight in my packet. Site driveway A is here onto Jenkins Road. On the site, construct a driveway with one ingress and egress lane entering the site and one ingress egress lane exiting the site. On driveway B at Highway 74, which is this driveway here, I'm sorry, that driveway A was here, not at Jenkins Road, it was center driveway. At driveway B, on the site, construct a right-in, right-out driveway with one ingress lane entering the site and one egress lane exiting the site. Construct one northbound right-turn lane along Highway 74 into the site driveway at B, which is reflected, I believe, here. Jenkins Road at Site Driveway C, which is the one here at Jenkins Road. On the site, construct a driveway with one ingress lane entering the site and one egress lane exiting the site. And there were some other requirements, well, some other conditions that we are not able to place on the developer, because they're outside of our jurisdiction, but some recommendations about installing a southbound right-turn lane along Ellison Road, because Ellison Road, per the traffic studies, is already experiencing some pressure. I think it's at a level of service E already, and so any additional growth in the area is gonna kind of push that intersection into a further state of, you know, pressure, but it's already kind of at that state. So they did have some recommendations for that intersection, considering that it's outside of our jurisdiction. I'm not necessarily recommending that the developer improve, make those improvements. It's also quite a ways away from the site. So staff, staff's determination is that this development plan is consistent with the comp plan and ordinance. If council chooses to recommend approval, staff and planning commission both recommend that the following conditions be considered: that architectural and landscaping standards listed in the development plan meet that of Section 113-191, which is our quality growth overlay architectural standards, specifically finished construction and perimeter birmingham, and that all transportation improvements just outlined from Greta's DRI determination be implemented and incorporated into the plan. And the applicant owner is here, if you have any questions, and I'm also available to answer any questions.
Let's, first of all, are there any questions for Philip? Okay, let's, let's go ahead and open the public hearing, and then I'm gonna, petitioner, you'll have 10 minutes if you choose to take it. And, and then we, so we'll have public hearing, those stating support for, those stating support against. If you are here, and you are not the petitioner, you want to speak, you'd have three minutes, just as we did during the public comment. So let's go ahead and open the public hearing and give you, petitioner, your 10 minutes and take it from there.
Good evening, I'm Rick Lindsey. I'm representing the applicant here, East Group. Good to see you guys again. Seems like I'm here more than I am in my cousin's house. But pleased to be here this evening. We have John Coleman and also have John Ratliff here, who are representing East Group, along with Ed Wyatt, who is representing the Hobgood property, Hobgood family, rather, the property owners. What Philip said, I believe, is very important, that this plan does comply with your comprehensive plan and your future land use plan. It really hits all the buttons. It's gonna satisfy your ordinances. They talk about the gateway entrance to your, to Tyrone. The applicant is going to adhere to all of the requirements or suggestions that Greta put in the DRI, and will also adhere to all the requirements of the ordinance. We submitted some photographs of the buildings that are already on ground around the country. Wanted you guys to see the quality of the architecture and the buildings that East Group has, that it owns across the Sunbelt states in, in the country. And that's not necessarily to reflect what the buildings will look like here in Tyrone. We will adhere to the architectural standards. I also wanted to make sure that council was aware that this is a, it is technically rezoning, but it's really a revision of your development plan. The property is already zoned M1, and it was slated for the studios. Studios has proven to be not really a viable option there. It has been marketed for a number of years. This development plan actually is less intensive in the use than, than the studios would have been. But I wanted the council to know that it's, again, while it's technically a rezoning, it's more of a revision of the development plan that was already approved several years ago. It will have less traffic that will be generated here during the morning hours. The traffic studies show that it will have 23% less vehicles in the morning rush hour and 15% less than the evening rush hour than the studios would have had, had they been built according to the approved plan. And wanted to make sure the council understands, this is not a distribution center. This is not Amazon, this is nothing like that. These are buildings that are designed for smaller companies that just need some space to store items and whatever else. And John Coleman's gonna walk through, the council, through really what they will do on the inside of all of these. The types of vehicles that will be going into and out of the, of this project or this plant here, this property, will be the panel trucks and vans and cars. You're not gonna see the huge semi-trucks, and I don't want anybody to think, again, that it's a distribution center, because it is not. We believe that the businesses that will locate here will generate a variety of good high-paying jobs, jobs for local residents, for citizens of Tyrone and the area, and very different from the studios, not just flying in, shooting the movie, and flying back out, but actually living here in our community and contributing to, to the tax base here and to the quality of life that exists in Tyrone and the surrounding areas. We also, this would be a great tax generator for, for not only Tyrone, but for, for the county. Over the next 10 years, it's gonna generate approximately $7 million in property taxes, and of that, 1.3 million will be Tyrone, so really $130,000 a year for additional taxes that will come to the city, should this be approved and developed. As Philip said, we did meet with the superintendent of the schools. We met with Dr. Patterson and his management team here back, back in the winter or back in the early spring. They supported the application, were very excited about it, and then sent a letter following our meeting to the town. I believe you guys have that in your packet. We have gone through the DRI review, if I can say that, and Greta has approved it with the conditions, and again, we are adhering to and will accept those conditions. We've been before the planning commission twice, once back in the late winter, early spring, and then had to go for the DRI and went back to the planning commission again about three weeks ago. Both times received unanimous votes recommending approval for the council. And we had the public hearings in both of those meetings. In the first meeting, we had two gentlemen who spoke. I'm gonna say in opposition, but they really had some more questions, whatnot. After the meeting, I talked to both of them at length, answered their questions, gave them my email and telephone number, sent them emails afterwards, whatever, and invited them to the second meeting. I know one of the gentlemen was here, but had no comment at all to make during the public comment. So we believe that there is not any opposition in the community to this, that, again, the superintendent of the school and his management team have, have supported it. And in summary, I think it really hits all the buttons for Tyrone. I mean, the property is going to develop. The proposed use is less intense than the already approved studios. Be a great tax generator, as I said. I think it'll provide great jobs here in the community for our residents and the community's residents, and I think it'll make a great fit, basically from the quarry going over to the less intense use on the other side. Following me, I think John Coleman's gonna speak more about the details of what's the building's gonna look like and how they're gonna be developed. So thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. My name's John Coleman, I'm with East Group Properties. With me tonight, our team has our civil engineer Wesley with Everly, traffic consultant Harrison with Kimley Horn, and then also Courtney with Cushman Wakefield, will be doing our marketing and the leasing of the property. Courtney is a 30-year resident in Fayette County, so she's been here with her family and is very familiar with the site. The applicant is East Group Properties, and we are a publicly traded real estate investment trust. We're on the New York Stock Exchange under EGP, and our ownership is really in the, in the Sunbelt states. I've been with East Group for 20 years now, and I manage the eastern region. Also, office with me, I didn't mention John, is, John R. is with us, and then he, he has worked with Philip on the application very closely. Both John and I live in the Atlanta area and our office here, so if there's an issue, Philip can call us and we'll come down and we'll figure it out. Our goal is to really partner with the town. We think it's the best way to put these properties into development. We'll make it a win-win development for both sides and move forward together. And what's really unique about our program that sets us apart from our competition is we're a long-term owner, so we're not developing these to sell them. Our, our RE portfolio is really owned long-term, so you're gonna be with us for 20, 30, 50 years. Because of that, since we don't sell our, our properties, we really vest in high-quality business parks and quality locations. This park will include the above-standard architectural we talked about, above-code minimum landscaping, and signage even, signage restrictions that are gonna make it uniform throughout the park, so each tenant and each building will have the same signage restrictions in their lease agreement. As Rick said, the business park will cater to technology companies, healthcare, pharmaceutical fulfillment, aviation, home builder showrooms, movie studio production. Would like to still keep that as part of our total target for these buildings. What we're not, and I think Rick touched on it, I manage the eastern region. We have about 20 million square feet of ownership, and in that portfolio, we do not have Amazon as one of our, one lease and any of that square footage in my region. And what I'd like to do, John, is to maybe flip through a couple slides that show what we are and what we're not. I think this is very telling in the, in the green, what our buildings look like, our architecture, the image that we like to represent, and then on the, on the right-hand side, what we're not, is the big Amazon fulfillment with, with the Sprinter vans everywhere, the massive parking lots. You can see from these buildings, multiple entries across the front of the buildings. That's because we have, we subdivide these buildings for multi-tenant, and we can be flexible with that lease up. So really just wanted you to show, this is not what we're gonna do, and they're not even in our portfolio. As Rick mentioned, the target companies will be higher-paying jobs, so that will be a benefit, I think, for the local community. Specifics to the build, the development, five buildings, we'll each build those specs, so we'll start those specs, probably start the two buildings fronting Highway 74 first, but we'll write, we'll write through the whole portfolio. I mentioned the multiple entries. John, let's go ahead and scroll to the building photos. A typical tenant's gonna range from about 30,000 to 50,000 square feet. This is a park we have down in Miami. And multiple entries, you, you can see across the front of the building, a lot of glass, a lot of high glass, so this gives also the, the look of a, a single-story office building. This is a park in Orlando, Horizon. And, and these parks, we like a park setting. We don't like to have one-off buildings. The five buildings is a real good fit for us. These parks actually have seven and 12 buildings, so you can see the consistency of the architecture, the upgraded landscaping, really consistent with what we like to do. You see the glass across the front of the buildings, that's typically where the offices and showrooms are located. As a long-term owner, we're gonna have the glass in the entry. Am I up?
You're up, but you can wrap up.
Okay.
I don't wanna cut you off.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, the, the required landscape berm along Highway 74, we're gonna agree to that. The multi-use cart path, running the full length of the property, agreeing to that. One thing I did want to close on, John, if we could maybe put up the interior shots, I think it's important that you see what some of the companies are that have interior spaces. This is a home builder, Toll Brothers, in Orlando. This is where they have their showroom, so if you want, if you buy a house with them, you'll come in, you'll pick out your kitchen cabinets, your carpet, your tile, and you go through, and that's their process. This is a data center, smaller, it's about 40,000 square feet that we have in Tampa. Pharmaceutical with a high-end, we're not usually the low-cost provider, so we have higher rents, and people feel more comfortable with their investment in those type of buildings. Pharmaceutical, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Davita, Aetna, and more medical bio, biomed. And then, real quick, the studios, we talked about the studio use. This is in Tampa, Norwegian Cruise Line. They create studios for each of their cruise ships to show the exact stage that they're gonna, the performers. So the performers come in here and train for those ships in these studios, and then they go from this space onto the cruise ship, and that's the, the mimic. And then one last slide on Universal Studios and Disney, where we have stage sets for their, their theme parks, rides that simulate the, the rides from the, from the theme park, and then also some of the costume fabrication in those spaces.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that, thank you.
That's all right. We'll, we'll probably end up asking you questions, so you can share more than. Is there anyone else here that is not the petitioner that would like to speak in support of this? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this? Okay, council, I'm gonna open it up for questions for the petitioner, if you have them.
In looking through some of your, your, your traffic studies here that you have, I see that you've got coming out of Exit C, along Jenkins Road. I see that you've got arrows pointing to Ellison Road. Was there, is there thinking, or how much did you think that you were going to be utilizing the Sandy Creek to Ellison to Jenkins traffic way?
Hi, Harrison Forter, Kimley Horn, traffic engineer. So we projected 20% out toward Ellison Sandy Creek Road to the east, so that way, that covers traffic coming from the east, these places, Fayetteville, workers who would, may live over in that area and come to the site. All service vehicles were projected to use Highway 74.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, and then I'll jump back in.
You said you spoke with the superintendent, and I assume, did you speak with Mr. Satterfield of Facilities? Okay, I appreciate you doing that, even though they're not our responsibility, I appreciate that you did that. They have a new principal that she's only been there, I think, three weeks or so, and I, I just wonder if somebody could go and introduce themselves to her.
Colonel, we talked to Dr. Patterson and his management team, and he had probably half dozen of his senior staff people there, and we told him we would really like to find ways to, to more partner up with, with Sandy Creek to, you know, with somebody, depends on what tenants we have there, but I know the studio is one of the things trying to partner up and have programs with that, but the same thing, and, and Dr. Patterson was very, you know, supportive of that and whatever. So we, you know, again, told him we want to be a partner, not only with, with the town, but with the school system as well. And so it was a long, we had, I don't know, maybe an hour-long meeting with them, but it was very good.
Did, what about the church? Did anyone have any conversation with the church?
We have not. And the reason why we didn't is because we got no opposition really at any time or questions that came up. We wanted to go talk to the school system, because obviously that's a big use right there with, with those three schools right there in Jenkins, but we not had conversations with other people, other than the two gentlemen I mentioned in my presentation after the first planning commission meeting. I, I spent probably 20 minutes talking to them afterwards and answering all their questions.
I wanna get you, I wanna make sure that we state for, for the, or get you to agree for the record, the, the conditions that have been stated. I think you've already read all of those conditions.
Yeah, and I believe they, they did, Mr. Lindsey stated that they agreed to the traffic conditions and things as well.
That was sufficient, okay.
Yeah. If you want to hear from Mr. Coleman, that's fine.
I was just the messenger on that, so.
Sometimes I'm just the messenger too, so don't kill me.
We've seen a lot of emphasis on the, on the examples that you provided, and I just wanna also state for the record that we'll be looking at brick and glass as opposed to evans and glass.
Right, we're going to adhere to the architectural standards, but we just wanted to show you, we could have drawn up pretty pictures, we wanted to show you actually what's on the ground, so it's not like guessing, oh, this is what an architect did, no, this is what we built. Those are the architectural standards, obviously, for a different part of the country, but here, you know, it's gonna look a little different.
The only other, only other question I, I had was, what kind of room do you have for a buffer, and what is, what plan is there for a buffer between 74 and, and the front buildings?
I'll let John talk about it.
Wesley Reed with Everly and Associates. So along, along the front, what we're planning to do is to put a four-foot berm, which would have plantings on top of that berm. So I don't, do you have the cross-section view? I believe it was in the packet. We did a, a cross-sectional view in front of the, the site that kind of shows, it's not gonna block the entire view, but, but it is gonna block a lot of the view and make it where it's It kind of shows, it's not going to block the entire view, but, but it is going to block a lot of the view and make it whereas you're driving through. Yes, you may see that there is a building there, but it's not going to tower over the road. You can see it. So there, there's a, there's a parking lot between the buildings, between the building and the berm. So that, that in itself is 64 feet, and you have a sidewalk between that. So with all that, you're 80 feet till you even get to the landscape. And then it varies along the frontage, but just the four-foot berm, you're looking at, you're looking at about 20 feet just to get that berm in there. So in the, in the tightest spaces, that's going to be. There's some, some utility poles that we have to work through that are along that, along that road as well. But the berm will continue and be around those utility poles as a kind of, so we're not going to cut the berm where those utility poles are. We'll still have that berm with the plantings behind those, those telephone poles and the guide poles that are along that, that road.
We had a discussion at some point about a multi-use path. What was the, what was the end of that discussion?
We did. The multi-use path is projected or shown on the rear of the site.
Okay, that's what I, that's, okay, makes sense.
Right here.
I remember that from before.
Signage, Phillip, where, how, this gentleman explained about the four-foot berm, which is wonderful. But is there going to be signage along 74? I should maybe direct it to you.
And they would, they would be permitted to put signage along Highway 74, monument sign for the, for the business park, yeah.
I don't, I don't think, at this, at this time, we haven't gone into details on that. But I don't think there's any reason why we wouldn't adhere to the requirements that are in the code. There would need a variance for that. It would typically be a monument sign that would be, if, be an exterior lit monument sign.
Couple, two concerns, and it's basically about the connectivity of the multi-use path, which is obviously very important for our town, and it's something that we're working towards. If I read correctly here in, in this book that we got here, you've got about 58% of the property is going to be impervious surface. So that's going to mean that you're going to have to have, obviously, some detention ponds in there, and they're going to have to be. I, one point I want to make about that is that I do share with one of our planning board members about the, about the rain gardens, you know, concept anyway, and I'm sure that you, you're aware of that.
Right, so these point, we, this plan's been in for a long time. And we're actually, East Group is, we're, we're working with them on, on further developing what we're going to do. And so if you can actually see the area that's between, there's, there's the two buildings on the right-hand side of the page, and there's a green space in between that and the, and that is actually going to be what we would, the technical terms, a buyer retention area. And so that would be similar to a rain garden, and that'll be where a lot of our water quality treatment is occurring. We'll still have, the two areas that you see in, in, in blue would be stormwater management ponds, which would further treat that water and also provide the detention so that, you know, we're not, we're not, that additional impervious area is not creating a burden downstream with additional water being released.
Right. I know there's a 100-foot berm that you have from the property back to where the golf cart path is, or the multi-use golf cart path. And that's part of that 100-yard. My, my only concern that I have is that there's, on the next property, which is the church there, they do have a Boy Scout group that does meet there every week. And there's a lake back there that they use for camping out at nighttime. And I just want you to just be aware and, you know, take any precautions that you can to protect that for them.
Yeah, so there's a couple, a couple of things. During construction, obviously, that's a huge erosion control and monitoring that is, is a, is a big deal. And I, we actually had a conversation earlier this week that we, noting that lake, we really need to be very diligent that, one, we document that, what that looks like now, so that we make sure that it, we, it is in the same condition when the project's done that it was when it started. So that's one thing. And then we'll, we'll also, in our, in our hydrology study, when we're going through the full design, that, we'll have to study downstream of where we're starting. So we're not, we're not only worried about what our site is doing, we're actually looking downstream to a certain point that's defined by the Georgia Stormwater Manual. And we'll be looking at the culverts, the lakes, the different things that are downstream of that to make sure there's not a negative impact from what we're doing and what, how we'll treat our stormwater and release it.
Very good, thank you.
I think you answered my question about the stormwater running downstream. But I have another question about the multi-use path. It says that the 10-foot multi-use paths along the east side of the site, which provides connection to Peachtree City. How is that?
Talking of covers.
I, I think their application was made before Peachtree City.
I can tell you how much it costs.
Sorry I asked that, but you know.
Good question, good for you.
Yeah, what we're showing up there is what was the intention to, to, they say, you know, go to either end of the property and then, and then stop. And then ultimately, when the mixed-use development is developed, they can connect in, and same thing for the other side.
Yeah, because the way I perceive it anyway, we've got our, we've got our neighbors and our residents at River Oaks and River Crest that they're going to want to use that, kids to go to the Sandy Creek High School.
Right, and that, and, and part of the reason, there was, there was conversations during the DRI of where does that fit? And where does, where should that be? And, you know, part of us, do we need, do we need to do it along 74? And we were really wanting it to be in the back. And part, because you have two driveways that you're going to have vehicles coming in and out. And if you have people that are, that are using that to get to Sandy Creek, that's going to be during the morning when there's going to be more vehicles coming in. And so that, that's one reason we thought the, the back was better. And it's not easy to put it back there. We, we have, have looked at how we're going, there's going to be some retaining walls and some other things that'll have to do, just because there's a lot of topo that we have to, to, to work through on the back. But we feel that's probably the better solution than trying to run it across the front and having those, those crossings and.
Much safer.
Yeah, much safer, that's right.
Very good, thank you.
So we can mark the sentences in here referring to Peachtree City out.
I, I, I do, I do not know where that came from, but yeah.
Phillip, you've got some explaining to do.
Thank you for that.
You can answer me from there, because I think it's a short answer, but I, and this might even be a Phillip question. This just looks like a right-in, right-out. It doesn't look like an ingress egress, at least as we see it.
For which intersection?
For the two curb cuts on 74.
So, so this, this intersection here at driveway B is a right-in, right-out? This intersection here at driveway A, this is actually where the pre-existing median cut is? So this, I believe, is intended to be a full motion.
I'm sorry, I said ingress egress, I meant deceleration lane, turn lane.
Yeah, this, I'm trying to go back, yeah.
The requirement from Greta was, was to have driveway B, which is the one on the left, have a D cell lane. There currently is a, there's a lane that if you take a right off of Jenkins Road, that, that ends. So it, it, it ends at our site. So we'll be extending where that ends and striping it to, to, to basically make it where vehicles will exit, and then vehicles will enter. I mean, it'll be a striped-off area so that, you know, people, it's clear where people exit to get on 74 from the Jenkins Road acceleration lane, and then where they get into the D cell lane.
Phillip, to your point, you just mentioned, what is the, the one on the right side over there? That's A? They're not going to be able to go straight across to cross over the medium in 74 at that point, are they?
I believe, I believe GDOT approv, it's not done construction approval, but they did the DRI approval, I think, for a full motion curb cut there. Now, GDOT can come back through later and adjust that intersection to their liking. They, they, they're very fond of the R cuts and J turns, so that might happen in the future. But I think as of right now, that's not necessarily the plan.
There is, the, in that area, the median is very wide. There's actually about 75 feet from, of, of Refuge is what it's called. So if a, if a vehicle is to go, is wants to make a left, they would actually turn out, and then it would be a second movement to actually, so you don't have to go from our site all the way across like you would if there was no median, or if there was a very small median where you would, you would essentially have to make it all in one motion. So it's a, it's a safer condition than it would be if it was just a 12-foot wide, because you can't get a car 12 feet. So it is, the way it's set up is, is good for, for what, for being able to take a left turn out.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
I thought I saw something about a left-turn lane at Ellison Road. Did I read something about that in here?
You, you did. There was a DRI recommendation that that intersection be improved. But it's outside of really the immediate site here, and it's also outside of the Town of Tyrone's jurisdiction. So I think the DRI was just pointing that out in a general sense, just that the county and should be aware of what the impact on that intersection is going to be over time. The level of service impact between a no-build scenario and a build scenario was not, not a whole lot different. I think it was just a couple of trips per day. But it did make it cross into a new level of service threshold, so they were identifying that. We're unable to make that a condition, just based on our jurisdiction, but it was noted.
Gotcha, thank you. No, I'm finished, thank you.
I'm good. We can entertain a motion now.
I make a motion that we, we approve the, the plan that they have here, including the conditions that Phillip has mentioned before. Does that suffice, Counselor?
His conditions are enumerated in his presentation, and it covers both the DRI conditions and his town conditions.
Okay, very good.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, our next item is for the millage rate. And Sandy, I'm going to ask you to speak to us one more time.
Yes, sir. Per law, we have had three previous public hearings on the 2022 millage rate. And tonight, we are going to set the 22, 2022 millage rate for the Town of Tyrone. Each year in August, a millage rate must be set to calculate the Town of Tyrone's share of property taxes, which are used for general fund expenditures for that year. The proposed 2.889 millage rate is estimated to provide revenue for approximately 15% of the budgeted federal fund, I'm sorry, general fund expenses for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. Staff recommends that the Town of Tyrone maintain the 2.889 millage rate for the 15th year in a row.
As she mentioned, we have had three public hearings, and so this is not a public hearing, but is a moment for a, a motion.
I make a motion that the town maintain the 2.889 millage rate for the 15th year in a row.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed?
Aye.
Right, by a vote of 3 to 1, that millage rate is continued. Our next item is regarding sidewalk repairs. Mr. Langford?
Any other counsel?
Hi.
All right, so this is for consideration to award the 2022 sidewalk repairs in Millbrook Village, Dublin Downs, and Berry Hill. It's project number PW hyphen 2022 hyphen 10. And the consideration is to award the project to A Abbey Group. This is our continued effort to remove trip hazards from the town sidewalks and to improve safety. The project was advertised and bids were taken on July 20th, 2022. Low bidder was A Abbey Group. Their base bid plus a bid alternate was $42,435.31, which is within our Public Works budget for this project. Also, just wanted to let you know, if you just look at the bid tab, you'll see that there were three companies that were very close in the bid. Their, the bids were approximately 42, 46, and 50,000, so that's pretty good grouping. So we feel very confident with the, the pricing. So the other thing I'd like to point out is that my plans do not depict any sidewalks going into Peachtree City. So. So, anyway, staff recommends awarding the 2022 sidewalk repairs, Millbrook Village, Dublin Downs, and Berry Hill, project number PW 2022 hyphen 10, to the A Abbey Group for a fee of $42,435.31. Answer any questions?
Yeah, how long has A Abbey been doing this kind of work? I didn't know they did that.
They've done several projects for us, so at least four years that I've been here, I know they've been doing this kind of work. And their work has been as good as the other company that we used last time was Blunt Construction, which is a major company. They're a huge construction company. So we've been very pleased with, with the work that they've performed as far as their, you know, projects. And this is identical to what they've been doing for us, so.
Not aware of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions? Or motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the 2022 sidewalk repair, Millbrook Village, Dublin Downs, and Berry Hill, project number PW dash 2022 dash 10, to the A Abbey Group for the fee of $42,435.31.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, if you have any matter on your mind that you want to speak to us about, we welcome you to come forward at this time. You have three minutes.
Now's your time, guys.
All right, hearing none, are there any staff comments?
I have a couple, sir. Number one, I just want to mention that Tyrone was once again listed by Safelies as the, one of the top 10 safest in the, in the state, specifically number three. So we got that information yesterday. So that's a tradition that's been going on with our town for a long time.
Where'd Peachtree City go?
Want to.
Which, which way are they on?
Oh, let's see, if we got to be, they were number five.
Number five, okay, good, that's good.
But who's counting? But so Phillip and, and, you know, the crew at the police department, we appreciate y'all for keeping that going. It just says a lot about our town, our community, so we're very proud of that. And then also wanted to just mention that our last first, the DDA's last first Friday of the year is coming up on September 2nd. We are going to have abandoned food trucks again. This time it is the Vintage Vixens, who are a, I understand, a very good all-female rock cover band. So it's going to be, you know, kind of 60s and 70s vibe, so it should be a fun night, so. That's all I got.
Any other staff comments? Any counsel comments?
I just have to tell Scott, you have to ride by Laurelwood and Briar Hill, Briarwood, the house with the bushes that I'm always complaining about. There's hardly any bushes. They sold it, somebody came in and it's ground level. They so good. People think Si got it done. I did not do it. I've been getting phone calls thanking me. I said, I just got them trimmed. But yeah, you can see.
I know you and Tracy were out there cutting them down.
Yeah, I had to stop and look.
We have a planning commissioner here tonight. Thank you for what you do for, for the town.
Thank you.
Patty, Ms. Marge, recognize you. Thank you for working with the young man who wants to do his Eagle Scout project down there. And so, and Ms. Chrishell Madison is with us in the back. She runs the Tyrone Community Garden.
She's head.
And so if you'd like to have a, call it a plot, it sounds like a cemetery. Thank you. Is there anybody that I missed? Buddy, did I miss you? Okay, any other counsel comments? No more need for executive session, correct?
That's correct.
Right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.